The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure a productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning that the members in the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the town hall and available for everyone to review.
Okay.
Evening.
Hello. So, welcome, everybody. I, let's see, I'm gonna let Devin. So, I think that I've gotten everybody. If you haven't signed in yet, please make sure that you do, otherwise, though, I think that I did get you and write you down. Mike Beecher is our chair, so if you do wish to speak this evening, please make sure to direct any comments or questions to Mike. Online tonight, we have Molly B. and Deb. And in board members present this evening, we have Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, and Jessica Van Orte. I'm Kristin. And we did send out, so I sent out an updated agenda this morning for everybody to review, and I know that Deb did distribute that. But the additions that we had on there, Greg, I don't want to butcher it, but is it Polker McKee?
Yeah.
Okay. From Rutland Regional Planning Commission is here this evening under pre-requested appearances to talk a little bit more about the municipal technical assistance program. Within the highway, the road foreman's report, there's some technological needs that the highway department is in need of, which were discussed. I had sent out an email to everybody, but I wanted to talk about it here in person. There's also been a facilities request for use of the auditorium by the Pollet Volunteer Fire Department. Does anybody else have any additions?
To older unfinished business, I can add an update on the bike ped grant.
Okay.
Because I met with the engineers today.
Nice.
And so I have, and I asked the question that Mike had for me, so I have, I have some updates.
We also already had, we had the town gravel pit survey, there were continued discussions of that. Slag pile log and open meeting law changes, I don't know, anything isn't prepared to be discussed, but, okay. The minutes that need approval are from our last regular meeting, which was June 25th.
I'll move that we approve those minutes.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Greg?
I'll come a bit closer here.
Was Jill, was Jill able to join us tonight or not? I reached out to her to see if she could, uh...
I don't see if, that she's here yet.
She said she had some stuff going on, and she would try and zoom in. I said it'd be right close by the beginning at by seven.
Okay.
I tried to get Jill, the manager of the treatment facility, to join via Zoom, but she said she was, had to her mother complex, but she would try. You guys are gonna meet soon anyways?
Yeah, I reached out to her last week, and I haven't heard back from her, and she might be on vacation.
She may need to call her.
Okay. Yeah, I'll call her later this week. But I'm happy to say that the grant application was successful to the municipal technical assistance program, and this program has kind of been fits and starts across the board. This project for the town of Pollet was one of two approved in all of Rutland County. The other was Benson, but it's exciting that the state has advanced a lot of money for engineering services for the improvement and reduction of user costs associated with the West Pollet wastewater facility. And the one-page document here goes into a bit more detail of that, but essentially, the state has contracted with Stone Environmental, which is an environmental and civil engineering firm, to provide engineering services across the board for this program, which means that they will be working with Jill closely to determine the best plan of action forward. As I understand myself, there are several different potential solutions that could reduce user costs associated with the wastewater plant currently, and I think would be up to all of you, and then also Jill as the technical expert to kind of give Stone the direction they need to produce the designs that would potentially be able to reduce all those user costs. And the second piece of this is that the regional planning commission will act as a grant writer to try to get funding to implement all those designs, and hopefully we'll be successful at that, but at the very least, you'll have an idea of what the cost would be potentially, and then also have all those designs for engineering purposes.
When I spoke to Greg earlier about this, when he just touched base with me, I had mentioned that I knew that Jill had an idea, had mentioned an idea about converting one of the existing tanks, but that there also had been plans, beginning plans drawn up some time ago about adding a sludge tank.
Right.
So I know there's a couple of options that have been thrown around.
One of the questions, converting one of the, one of the four holding tanks at this point was, was structural engineering involved, and whether or not that was, that was enough to...
Looks like Jill just got here.
Ah, Jill. Hi, Jill.
Hello.
Hi, Jill.
I can, no.
Here, you wanna...
I'm not sure, but if you...
Here, watch.
Move over.
Yeah, perfect.
Is this a camera here, or is this...
That's the little owl guy there is the camera.
Hi, there.
So Jill, this is Greg from Rutland Regional, and he's handling all the grant writing process and stuff, and he just went over the stone engineering, is, if you could just kind of recap that again?
So, this program has received funding from the municipal technical assistance program, which is a firm across the state of Vermont that is, provides a technical assistance, which refers to grant writing and also design and engineering for projects in select municipalities. And Pollet has received an award from this program for the West Pollet wastewater treatment plant improvement project, and what the award exists of is engineering services through Stone Environmental, as well as grant writing services from the RRPC, to hopefully secure funding for construction after the engineering has been completed. And the next step, hopefully, is that you will be able to talk to Stone and coordinate with the Pollet Select Board to come together on what potential design would be most effective for reducing user costs for this wastewater plant. Did you catch all that? I'm not sure if, I'm too far from the mic.
It's pretty ethically, but I wanted to just ask you, do you know that what we need for the Pollet wastewater facility is separate sludge holding?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, good. Just making sure that we're not gonna like rehash the entire facility, we really just don't have, the sludge basically goes from the bottom of the clarifiers back into the septic tanks. It does not go to a sludge waste tank like it should, so that's what we're looking for.
Okay. And I am meeting with Stone later this week to just initially give them an idea of this project. I can, I'm not sure what your schedule looks like, and maybe we'd be able to talk about it offline in the middle of a Pollet meeting, but, I mean, I would be happy to connect you with the people who are the project manager at Stone for this project, so then you'll both go and know exactly what they should be doing.
Okay.
I know that you know a lot more than me.
Go ahead.
I think she said that sounds good.
Okay.
For them to talk about it offline.
Do, uh, is it, is there a time, Jill, that, that you would be, when do you plan on meeting with Stone, Greg?
Thursday at 1:30, but I can also reschedule that to whatever is more appropriate.
Okay. And that's gonna be at the facility in West Pollet, or?
Oh, that would be just a quick virtual...
Oh, a virtual meeting?
Yeah.
Is that something you'd be able to attend, Jill, or?
I've got a chat, I got you on my phone, 'cause I was running about, I'm just in the middle of, I took last week off for the first time in two years.
Ew.
And now I'm paying for it.
Yeah, I, maybe I better reschedule.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you two can talk and, and create a kind of time.
Yeah, if you, if you just send the invite out, there's a pretty good chance I'm gonna be able to attend, so go ahead and just send that out. I don't want to slow down progress, because we've needed this for so many years, so I would say keep it in motion, and if you send me the invite, if I can attend, which looks like I should be able to, then I totally will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the last minute, I noticed there.
I'd rather have good news last minute.
Did you have anything else to add to this? When, when he's done?
Okay. So, the last thing that I need is for whoever has signatory power on the board to sign the statement of works, then we can give this for airway for the record.
You have to vote on it?
Um, I...
We voted to accept this help last summer, but it probably wouldn't hurt to, it probably wouldn't hurt to approve it.
Yep.
Let's see.
Look it over real quick, just to be sure.
All right, this is the, yeah, this is the work they're gonna be doing, and how much that's worth, and this is all paid for by the state, right?
Yes, all paid for by the state.
And then it says that Rutland Regional Planning Commission will, will provide services to the town of Pollet. And they will do this much for us.
That does, that's it, we agree to play nice.
Yeah, we will do meetings, we will give them any information they need, and we will cooperate with administratively assisting them.
And what is that document called?
It's called a statement of work.
Statement of work.
There is a specific term to this particular program.
I'll move then that we sign, that we sign the statement of work for the municipal technical assistance program.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
Okay.
I can provide a photo, I believe, for your personal...
It would be nice to have one for our records.
Frank?
In the scope of the grant, does it cover the town's costs with the additional labor of Jill as a contractor, as well as the engineering? So, any additional work she's doing, is that also covered in the big grant?
I am not sure if it would be, but I believe that it could be.
Okay, it'd be great if it could be.
Okay.
I also believe it would not be a lot of work, potentially one meeting with Stone to update them on the exact specifications of the project.
So, little expenses here and there like that would be covered by the grant then?
I believe so.
To be determined.
Okay. So, is that all we need to do with you tonight, Greg?
That is all.
You got, you got it all about. Does anybody else have any questions for Greg? Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming down tonight, and I appreciate all your work to get this ball rolling and...
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
I'll put this chair away.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us, Jill.
Good to meet you.
Do you guys have any questions for me while I'm on, because I know I don't get to go to many of these meetings?
I think that, now news is good news, so I'm believing that everything seems to be going all right. Haven't had any issues at all?
Yeah, we're...
You locked up.
Well, she said she's on her phone.
Yeah. You just locked up. Okay, so...
They extended their permit review until they, until they decided they're administratively complete and send it to us, so we're still covered under our current permit, even though it's technically expired.
Okay. All right, every, all of that, everything is good with us. Thank you, Jill.
Awesome, thanks, guys, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.
Announcements?
Announcements? I have nothing.
Okay. Zoning administrators' report. Nancy?
The only thing I have to report is there is a scheduled VRV meeting on July 17th for our variance.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Nancy?
What was the date?
July 17th, thank you. 7:00 PM.
Any commission?
No report at this, at this meeting, but I'll just remind everyone that the fourth Monday of the month, which is July 22nd, is the hearing at 7:30 for the potential bylaw repeal, and then at 8:00 for the potential bylaw amendment. So anybody who is interested in those, either of those two issues can show up to the meeting. The warning has been posted in numerous places, and it will be both virtual and in person.
And that's July 24th?
Um, July 22nd.
Thanks, I'm having...
Monday, July 22nd.
I'm having a hard time with dates, clearly, this evening, okay.
Thank you.
What time?
7:30 for the first hearing, and 8 o'clock for the second.
Road Foreman?
Yes. So Damon submitted a report, so throughout the last two weeks, the highway department has assessed and completed road cleanup following storms. They've installed a new door on our mowing tractor, they've begun ditching on Rupert Hill Road, replacing a culvert in the process, they've continued hauling stone and roadside mowing, we have removed the plow and wing from the truck, from the new truck for summer service. Damon also met with Wade Mezier from the VLCT, who does all of our insurance kind of assessment work, and then Stephanie Bork of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And upcoming projects are to include the continuation of roadside mowing and ditch work. Following the meeting with Stephanie, that was the email that went around, which is the technical requirements for the highway department, but so, back. Someone's in the waiting room. Lovely. Allison. I'm just gonna write her, sorry. Quick pause of my train of thought, hold on. Allison Copeland. Okay. So following that meeting with Stephanie, so about a year or so ago, Stephanie had indicated when we had Dale as our foreman, that the highway department needed an iPad, which was purchased. The reason for that iPad is because it require, or it can hold a software, which the highway department needs to go around and basically acknowledge and show completed different portions of roadway that are, have, are now meeting standards for the state. And once those roadway portions meet those standards, they become, we continue to become eligible for funding, essentially. That's the quick summary. So, turned out that the iPad that we purchased did not have the right something or other to be able to host...
Technical specifications.
Technical, technical computer stuff that I don't know too much about, but it didn't have the right thing to be able to have the app that was necessary to be used out in the field. So Stephanie had sent out an email, which I had forwarded along to the entire board, requesting that we purchase the appropriate iPad for Damon, so that he can be more successful in doing that. So I had sent it out to all of you individually, everybody individually, except for Brian, I did not hear back from, said that they supported the purchase of this iPad for Damon. So I was hoping that here, as a motion, we might be able to get a formal...
How many's the motion?
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
I see Julie has her hand up.
Julie?
I mean, wrong, but I feel like I'm recalling that the issue was that there was no, like, cell carrier service, and so it needs Wi-Fi or, like, connectivity, and since Pollet has no cell service, like, nothing you get is gonna work.
Well, if I may...
Please.
So, I also had that same thought, and I was corrected by Stephanie, that it is in fact the, you don't need to have the actual Wi-Fi or cell service, you need to have a device that is capable of receiving it, which makes no sense to me, but I am like, apparently I don't know anything about technology. So, apparently, the, the version of iPad that we got doesn't have, like, the sophistication to be able to open itself up to doing those things, which I was like, I could have sworn that all iPads were capable of doing that. Stephanie says no. So, I think, so I, I've been down this trail, I had the exact same thought and reaction, but allegedly, no, there's a certain version of iPad. So, I would say, I mean, Julie, I'd be happy to, if you're open to it, I'd be happy to look at the one that we purchased, and then look versus the specifications of the one, because Stephanie sent that link, I think I forwarded it to you.
I think I got it.
Like, it was like two, oh, two weeks ago, maybe. We can look at that maybe together and just make sure. And then I, my other thought was, we do have this other iPad, which we've kind of had in this, like, holding pattern, and I think that it would be a really cool opportunity for, there's been discussions over the years of perhaps, at some point in time, bringing our select board members up to more of a paperless age, and getting you all on the board, like, on, in the digital era. Bob's like, oh no. But so, just as a thought, that might be a cool opportunity, maybe for, like, our, our chairman to be able to start utilizing an iPad, just to start seeing how that might look.
I don't, I don't think we need to waste any time getting him the appropriate tools, and if Stephanie knows the specifications to do what she needs to do...
Yes.
It seems like we should follow her recommendation.
Right. So I think that at the very least, what I would appreciate right now would be a motion and support of the board, and then Julie and I can look into it and just make sure that we're not retracing our exact same steps and going through and purchasing...
Not buying the exact same one.
Not buying the exact same device that we've already purchased, and then moving forward with that, because it, the impression that I got based on the email from Stephanie was that she was really hoping that he had that before they continued their trainings, because it seems to be a pretty vital piece of equipment, so...
The only thing that I would be thinking was, in case the new one we buy isn't what we need after all, we should make sure it's returnable if we...
Yes.
If it isn't what we need.
Yes. Okay, so...
I suspect that with Stephanie doing the training, she knows what she needs.
I, I think so, too.
I trust her as well, I mean, she's working with it every single day, so I do trust her instinct on that. Okay, so we had a...
Did you make a motion? Did Batman make a motion?
And I think I seconded you.
You did.
Frank?
I was wondering if they needed the iPad to have interconnectivity through the web with some sort of app that's, a web app, which you wouldn't have in town, and that's what they're looking for, versus doing the stuff and uploading it.
So, we're still, are still kind of strongly following Stephanie's lead, so, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
The next thing that I...
Some road thing. We have that new culvert on our road, and I guess it's, our neighbor was saying that it started to settle, so next time the guys come by, if they can throw some dirt...
Okay.
That's all.
I'm sure that...
I'm sure they'll see it.
Yeah.
I'm just hesitant to let you know.
Okay, we'll just keep an eye on that and stuff, probably after, after the bridge gets fixed, so that they can get out there instead of driving through Rupert, but I'm just, that'll be soon, too, so, okay, we'll keep that on, on the list, thank you.
And then speaking of the bridge, I do have an update on that, so Rich reached out to the folks that are doing it.
Daniel's Construction.
Daniel's Construction, I think Matt Beldon was the person's name that he spoke to specifically. All is going well with the bridge, they are expecting that they're on this, still on the six-week timeline, so they're really happy with how things are going. They had a slight pivot this week, they had intended to do one thing, but they ended up doing another because they had to wait for some galvanization of some pieces, so it's exciting. Things are gonna, galvanization. So, anyway, so that's great news.
Plus it's shiny, too.
Yeah, it's gonna be so shiny and nice and new, just what we all want out of a fresh bridge. But yeah, but it's all really going well, and they appreciate everybody's patience, and they're on the right track, and that they're, they're working within the timeline that they anticipated, so...
Excellent.
Let's all, you know, keep thinking positive thoughts for continued good progress.
Harley?
That's a relief, because now that they've exposed the beams, I was wondering if the beams were going to be found deficient or not, and it sounds like they're good, they're good and don't have to be replaced.
Everything, everything is going good, no surprises so far, but Sue?
I was talking to Myron Waite, who has the Model T Ford of 1930, and he and I were thinking that when the bridge opens, we could have his model, he could drive his Model T over the bridge first thing.
That sounds cool.
Take a photo of it, like, first, first across the bridge.
First then the bridge opening. So anyway, keep it in mind, we may be down here with Uncle Mike doing the opening, so...
Great. Frank?
I talked, I went down and seen what they're doing, I talked to the guy with the equipment there, and he mentioned that the anodizing concept to make the bridges last longer, but it brings a slight charge to it, they have experience doing that in other places and other projects. He said it works.
Okay. Anything else on the road foreman's report?
Yeah, my last thing is that the, the people from ATG, who we got our new truck from, came down today, and this has to go to you, Julie, these are the spare keys, so the new truck, I think that they were, Kevin Mason is here, I think that they came down today, they didn't bring the truck, but they're bringing the truck.
It's here.
Just swap it out, it's here now.
It's here.
So that's very exciting, so we have our new truck, and I spoke to, there you are.
I didn't know where to drive it, as I couldn't see it.
And so, yeah, I spoke to ATG today, and they needed some information from us, and so they are submitting the registration, and Julie has worked with VLCT, so the loaner truck is off of our VLCT insurance, and the new truck is on it, and so we are in business.
Super.
But then just a friendly reminder, we are searching for members for our highway department to work alongside Damon, so please, if anybody knows anybody that's interested in joining our highway crew...
We have one guy, just Damon?
Yeah, if anybody's, know anybody that's interested in working with our crew, please...
I take it back about what I said about the word.
Send us, send us, keep us in mind.
I had no idea.
So, friendly reminder. So, that's that.
Any other questions regarding the highway department? Okay.
I have one.
You have one?
Oh.
Hi, speaking of highway department, is there any way, when the bridge opens, you guys could do something about the speeding cars in front of, from the corner at Max? Oh, there you go. Please?
There we go.
Can you put up a sign, can you write slowdown in the road, can you do something? Because even now with the bridge closed...
We can write them tickets.
People will go down to the end, get pissed off, turn around, and fly back up this road. So if, and I know there is a street sign, but it's way down there near the parking lot of the store, and people aren't seeing the speed limit or the fact that the road is closed.
I know what we could do.
It's just too congested where the signage is, in my opinion, so...
Well, we do have, we do have those speed signs, I don't know if they're all four posted right now, but maybe we can move one of them over here.
They're little speed signs.
Yeah.
That would be much appreciated, thank you.
Anything else?
Well, on that subject, my name's Mike, I live between the two bridges on Route 133, and I think it's like the Pollet raceway. And I don't really get it, for local people that live here, you would think you'd have a little respect, you would think you would encourage your employers, your neighbors, your friends, to slow down a little bit. And what I've seen is basically the Pollet raceway. They, you talk about speeding from the bottom of the bridge, give me a break, they come up the church, they start flying, they're doing 50 by the time they hit the fire department, and then they hit two bridges. And I, I just, I'm asking for local support, people just ask each other to slow down a little bit, maybe actually do the speed limit, maybe do 35 instead of 45 or 50? I'm just asking.
Well, thank you for your comment. Well, thank you for your comment.
Frankie?
Yes, please.
You notice, were you around yesterday?
I saw you.
Did stop.
I know.
Trying to stay on top of it. Dave's on vacation.
No, I get it. But I think we could make, the town could make a bundle. You can park on my driveway, you can, and take your share, I, I'm serious, you can make a bundle.
Then I'll be able to make money to stop and go safe.
It would be nice to be able to walk and not feel threatened.
Understood.
I'm all, only asking for that right, to walk without feeling threatened.
Thank you. Assessors' report?
Yes. Um, so the grievance hearings were held on Monday, July first, from ten AM until twelve noon, with inspections and deliberations following. Result of grievance notices were mailed on Tuesday, July second. There were three grievance hearings held in person and one by letter. Per statute, as of July first, all open meetings must be recorded. Grievance hearings were recorded, and that recording is currently on the shared administrative drive at the town hall. Technical difficulties made it impossible to link the hearings to the assessor webpage at this time, but we have posted on the assessor webpage that the recording is available to anyone wishing to hear it through an appointment with the assessor or town clerk's office. We have lodged the grand list after grievance changes with the town clerk, and Lisa will be working in the office one Monday each month, and as necessary from home. Karen will continue to be in the office on Mondays and alternate Wednesday mornings. That's all from the assessors.
Great. Anybody have any questions? Right here is this FedEx letter I just opened, it's from Tyler Technologies, and it's a, a bond, a performance bond for the reappraisal work that they're gonna be doing. We can put that, probably put it with the assessors. We could give it, what do you think, give it to assessors to hang on to? Town clerk's memo.
No, oh, Deb is here.
Do you have anything to add tonight, Deb?
Um, I actually don't have anything for you, um, just a little piece of information. The electrician that I contacted with regards to the quad box in my office for the installation of the, um, recording equipment, he is ending up moving out of town, so I contacted another fellow who is actually in town, um, I'm waiting for a call back from him. Um, other than that, I don't have anything, anything pressing. I see you got the, the parcel that I left in front of you at your table, Mike. And I also wanna say thank you to, um, Mr. Freeman for his kind words.
Thank you. Anybody having questions for Deb? Thanks, thanks for joining us, have a good evening, Deb.
Okay, thank you.
Julie?
Uh, two warrants this week, payable is nine thousand fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents, accounts payable is eighteen thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-six. The breakdown is general fund eleven five thirty-six fifteen, highway eleven five forty-six eighty-five, wastewater six twenty-one eighty-nine, and capital project fund four thousand two hundred forty-seven fifty. Um, I have closed the fiscal year at this time. I left on each of your spaces the final budget status report, uh, but I do wanna note that this is as of now, some of the invoices that are from this meeting are going on last year, and any audit adjustments that happen, um, with John Mudgeet will, will alter those figures at that time as well. Um, but that's a snapshot of where we are. Um, we do need to set the tax rates, um, and the wastewater user rates tonight, and, um, since we're doing that, I just wanted to let you guys know that I will not be available at the next meeting, as the next several weeks, I'm going to be very busy with, um, putting all of the documents together for the auditor and mailing and printing tax bills.
Well, I'll move that we approve these two warrants, um, payroll warrant two four zero seven zero, and accounts payable warrant two four zero seven one.
Any more discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, these, all these rates were set on and approved, I just need to sign it, right? We don't have to do anything other than that?
Right.
Yeah, I said, we signed it already.
But, right, I just want to show you all those, those rates. Okay, so now- What do I do next?
Um, we can, I don't know if you wanna start with property or wastewater rates.
Let's go with the wastewater.
Okay. So I've left you option one and option two. Um, in the past, for the past couple of years, we've used the entire fifteen K appropriation just to keep rates as low as we can. Um, this year, we have a twenty thousand dollar appropriation. I'm not recommending you use all of it. Um, so option one is half of it, and option two is what we had last year. Um, I just, I do wanna point out that option two matches the budget as printed. Um, but you guys are the sewer commissioners, so I think you could, um, go with option one if that's what you want.
Option two will keep it pretty close to what the rate is now, right?
Uh huh.
Thousand twenty-nine eighty.
I mean, I think that since it matches the reported budget, and that's what we've done the last couple of years, I, I'd go with option two personally.
I, I like that idea too, Rich.
Bob? You want to go with option two?
Yeah. And that's nearly fifty dollars, forty dollars off the budget, off the user rate.
Uh huh. And then we still have the five K left over of the appropriation to go toward the, the other things. Things that will be need to happen.
Right.
Frank?
So what would that be per user?
Thousand twenty-nine eighty.
And are the buildings that don't have hookups that are supposed to have them?
One twenty-two.
Like the state's building, VTRN's building, is that on the list of who we're sending the bills to?
The what building?
Uh, VTRN building. The old freight building?
Oh, railroad building?
Yeah, my father had that building, he didn't have a hookup or anything, and he still had to pay the super bill forever, and they don't have a hookup either, but technically, they probably still have to pay it. The question is, do they have a T in there?
Because it's, it's a little, I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, we'll have to look into that, but we can't do that right now, so.
Um, I'll move that we go with this option two, to use fifteen K of the appropriation.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Would you like to put, for the readers of the minutes, would we like to put-
Sure, do you have the info line?
Yes.
Do you have it? Okay.
I was just wondering, you want me to put the-
We need to sign these, or are we gonna sign other ones? We got, you got the official section.
That just have the sticky notes and not the photocopy.
Ah, okay.
So just take the one that you're gonna go with, and then sign that.
This is out.
And then we'll throw the other one away.
Now we're on to the-
Ready for property taxes?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so the top page just is a printout from Nemrick telling you that if these are the rates that we've set, how much we would raise in revenue, and what the budget calls for, so, um, as you can see, I'm comfortable with rates that are on that page, because it will collect what we need. Um, so on that note, I'm recommending that the, uh, general fund rate be point three one three five, highway point three seven five one, local agreement, um, point zero zero six six. And, um, the homestead education rate as set by the state is one point seven one seven two, and the non-homestead rate is one point eight seven nine five. Which gives you then on the second page, your grand total for the homestead rate is two point four one two five, and for the non-homestead is two point five seven four eight. Um, and I didn't leave this for you, but I did, um, some calculations, and you probably all are aware of the, um, sort of fear-mongering from the state, the, about how, how much rates are going to increase, and there certainly is some truth to it, but, um, they are projected, as far as I recall, were thirteen to fourteen percent increases, and our homestead rate is an eight percent increase, and our non-homestead is an eleven point eight percent increase. So, we're doing better than predicted statewide. Not that that softens the blow that much.
But it's a soft little cushion. And since we have no say, as the select board, in the educational tax rate, you know, that is- So, since this is all based on the budget that we already determined for last year, there's not really a lot for us to do here, except look at it and then approve it.
Right.
All right. I'll move that we approve this tax rate.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Harley?
Uh, I missed the first number that was cited for, um, the taxes, tax rates.
The homestead?
Uh, for homestead, the second number was point three seven five one, but the first number I missed.
Oh.
Point three one three five. Thank you.
Three one and the, the highway three seven, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Hey Julie, do you wanna do what we usually do, and you can send me what you'd like it to read?
Yes.
Thank you. Please, thank you.
Do they have anything else? Oh, truck, the truck loan, what do we have to do with the truck?
Oh, yes we do, oh, thank you. Please, Louise. I, I gave you a printout of that as well, so, um, the amount that we have left to pay on the loan, because we've already, we had already started paying the loan, um, is one forty-seven four fourteen. Um, the upfitting, I talked to Rich, I, I, I don't have a copy of what that estimate was, um, and I haven't seen a bill for it, but he was, he was thinking it was between ninety and one hundred, so I went with one hundred as the number. Um, and then we have the, the amount that's in the equipment fund currently is one oh six seven seventy-five. Um, the loan that we are approved from the state of Vermont with a much better interest rate is one hundred and ten. So, if we accepted that, we would have to then come up with an additional thirty thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars, um, to pay off the bounds and be done with that loan. Um, one of the things that you might note from the budget status report is that the highway is ending the year with a significant surplus, so I think that we could just do it.
Yeah.
I agree.
That sounds good.
I like that idea.
I mean, paying less interest is always good.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Can you, um, tell me more about that motion?
Just do it, just do it, doesn't sound like appropriate mention.
Motion made to just do it.
I would say the motion was made to accept the Vermont Municipal Equipment Fund Loan.
Okay, motion made to accept the Vermont Municipal-
Equipment Fund, was that it?
Yes.
Fund Loan. All right. Just do it.
I don't know what was wrong with that.
In the discussion, I'm gonna write, just do it.
That was to use-
We can all laugh at it, and then we're gonna get sued by Nike.
That was use the excess in the highway fund.
Right, okay. Okay. So, I made-
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
And that's-
That should be it.
Excellent, thank you very much. And thank you for joining us tonight. And there's my next.
Emergency Management Director.
I got my papers all mixed up. Town Treasurer's for Emergency Management Director.
So, um, Bob Marlino submitted a report of activities that took place last month, during the month of June. Two bariatric cots have been purchased for the emergency shelter. Bob attended the virtual FBI quarterly meeting, and Ed and Deborah Evans have been added to the Polit Emergency Management roster, both having community emergency response team, AKA CERT, experience from their time in the Southwest. So, thank you, Ed and Deborah Evans. And that's all from Bob, and I did hear from Jennifer Sullivan. I don't think Jennifer's here tonight, but there's nothing to report for the health officer this evening.
Emergency Management Director?
We just did that?
Yeah. And Jennifer, and wastewater, Jill was on, had really nothing going on. Facilities, PVFD auditorium requests for CPR?
Yep, so the, um, Polit Volunteer Fire Department requested to utilize the auditorium upstairs here, um, for one of their Tuesday evening meetings to, uh, complete their CPR training, and they'd like to utilize the space on July thirtieth, from six thirty to nine thirty. I checked the calendar, and there's nothing currently going on, so I let Bob know that I would submit the request to the board. I checked the calendar, and there's nothing currently going on, so I let Bob know that I would submit the request to the board.
I'll make the motion, we allow them to use the, the upstairs?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried, thank you. Facilities report, I have one thing to add. That I'd like to ask all the residents to please be respectful of the time of the town employees, as well as those hired by the town to accomplish specific tasks. If you have questions about town projects, or initiate, or initiate, please address inquiries to one of the select boards that's the liaison to the project, instead of talking to the outside contractors, whoever, or town employees that we have working here at this time. Thank you. Metowee School Board, do you have anything?
Oh, actually, oh, never mind, so sorry, that's, I'm jumping ahead, I'm getting excited.
So, I, I do, um, Kristen can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure it's hot out, and I sent that email and never attached the file, so, and then I didn't print my report, so I am recalling what I typed in my report for you. At our May meeting, which I think was on the 13th, uh, we monitored, um, several 4.0 policies on, the two that we monitored, Board Superintendent, um, Delegation, and then Board Superintendent Relationship. Um, we established a work plan and a data storage format for community engagement, um, events that we hold and the data that we collect from them, and established a five-year cycle to be able to use those, that information to adjust our end policies. We also set a retreat date for September, um, and that will be at the BRSU office. Um, at our June meeting, we went through a couple of 3.0 policies, and those were agenda planning and board job description. And we also had a really great meeting with several teachers from Metowee, um, who came to present to us, uh, the challenges and benefits of the last two years of new curriculum implementation.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you for that. Older unfinished business. Gravel pit survey, did we get any more answers that we were looking for, or do we need a little bit more time on that?
I think we need a...
We're gonna have to contact landowners.
So I know that, um, we, there was, I, I believe, as far as I know, there was some communication made with the generous volunteers who have been helping us to gather all this information, and there was some discussion about contacting the abutting landowners, but I have not heard any updates.
So, it's a work in progress?
Yeah, so, to be continued, yeah, work in progress.
Good. And the log, did we get anywhere on the log yet, or not?
I did not yet, that has...
So, work in progress, perfect.
It is a work in progress, it really continues to be on the list.
Okay, open meeting law changes.
Okay, so, um, so John Weiss actually just, and I haven't gotten a chance, um, but so John Weiss, who is the Chair of the DRB, um, had reached out to me a little bit, just wanting, kind of echoing the sentiments that I had discussed at the last meeting, talking about how we felt like it would be of benefit to the town to come up with some sort of a policy with how we're all going to make sure that we're upholding the open meeting law updates with the virtual requirements. Um, so, some ideas for the board to consider, we're talking about, there's some, thinking about putting together a procedure, um, which again, it just got emailed to me this afternoon. So I'd love to send it out for all of the board to review, and then I think that we could discuss it maybe again at the next meeting, just because, you know, I don't think we're gonna necessarily get anywhere tonight. But, just to give you a quick summary of what John was able to put together, which, thank you, John, if you listened to this. Um, but, so the purpose of it would be to provide the town of Pollet, the town of Pollet's public bodies with a standardized procedure to comply with this new open meeting law, which is 1 VSA subsection 312 for both hybrid and in-person only meetings. In addition, to provide the town of Pollet municipal and quasi-judicial boards with appropriate documentation and training with how to host, record, and share the hybrid meetings. So what John has put together is a hybrid meeting procedure, as well as the in-person only meeting procedure. Um, and it really just kind of talks about appointing a meeting liaison, who would be the person that's responsible for ensuring that the hybrid portion of the meeting is fulfilled, making sure that the, um, organizations that need have access to the town of Pollet Zoom. Also, before warning a Zoom meeting, understanding what the Zoom credentials are, um, and posting those appropriately, utilizing the Owl device, how to download the meeting recording, transferring the video file over to Sean, who's our web coordinator, um, ensuring that Sean's okay with being responsible for uploading all of those, and making sure that everybody knows that this whole process must be completed within five calendar days of the meeting. So, same, similar concept for the in-person meeting procedure, again, just making sure that, um, in that case, what Julie's recommendation was at the last meeting, I kind of was able to digest a little bit, to purchase an inexpensive audio recording device, I think would be a really great idea, just because the statute does state that there needs to be a recording of the meeting. Um, I do feel that, having been doing this, utilizing the Owl and doing the hybrid portion for the last four years, it is a lot of extra work, um, and I do feel like we have a lot of volunteers that are putting a lot of time and energy into our community, and so it's just something to consider. I think it could be of benefit to consider that audio recording device. It could really simplify the whole process when the hybrid meeting portion isn't also required. So, that's a quick summary of it, um, I'd like to just email it again to all of you guys, and maybe then table the rest of the discussion until the next meeting, once you've had a chance to review it. Um, I think also, my one final thought is just seeking clarification. The other thing on this would be to very clearly spell out which of our committees, groups, and boards are required to have what for their meetings. And that's what I have there.
Frank?
I reported, last meeting I asked some questions, some of the state people, and I had a long conversation with the lead attorney for Municipal Division of VLCT, and, uh, there was some, they've been dealing with the attorneys at the Secretary of State and the Department of Education to try and weed through this. And there was some aspects of it that he said that, "I'm not your, your attorney, you would have to consult your own attorney." On, in regards to certain things that they're actually still ironing out, I believe. One of them is, is how long you have to keep the records. And there's apparently state laws regarding to, to this recorded record, that, you know, they say 30 days, but there may be something, he was telling me that the Vermont State Records has some law, they have some archiving statutes, that those may apply. In which case, I don't see that we have the technical ability to comply at all securely with those long-term records of saving digital records. And, uh, so I'm, had a long voicemail from the Secretary of State's lead attorney, Jenny Prosser. And we're, we're gonna talk again, we're gonna talk, but she laid out a bunch of stuff, and there wasn't exactly what VLCT lawyer was saying, and she's a lawyer, and he's a lawyer, and they're two different divisions there, so I wanna mesh that together. But if it's the case that we have to do a lot of stuff digitally that is beyond our skill sets, period, then I think that's grounds, my personal opinion, but you have to consult an attorney on this, but possibly grounds for declaring a hardship exemption that you brought up in the meeting. There is a hardship exemption, because we can't do that, then, then we can't fulfill the entirety of the thing, that we would hardly go for hardship exemption, and then employ what John was recommending, our own standardized program for open meeting law, that would have to comply, I believe, with our inclusion statement, which does not exclude, it includes, and it doesn't, it prohibits all sorts of discrimination. So we digitally have to do that, I believe.
So as this goes along, we'll gather more information and build.
And I do just wanna make sure that I clarify that, that we're not suggesting that we put together our own policy or our own standard for the law, it's just putting together sort of an internal
Procedure.
Procedure, so that we can make sure that we're adhering to it. So not, not suggesting, I just wanna clarify that for everybody, not suggesting that we are reworking it, just making sure that we can comply, so.
I wonder if we might just, even before we adopt these procedures, if we might just give Julie the go-ahead to buy a small recording device, since we're probably gonna need it for some reasons.
It seems, it seems like the appropriate thing.
No, for, for in-person meetings where we don't do hybrid.
I see, so this doesn't, this doesn't provide recording for you, even if it's not being used as a hybrid?
No, it only records if you are having a meeting.
You can record Zoom, but you can't just record through.
Have you looked into small recording devices?
Yeah, you can get like a, it's a flash drive, and they're ranged between like 15 and 60 dollars. So, I don't think I need a motion on that, I'll just get one.
So, the consensus of the board is, would you please procure one of those items? Thank you. Frank?
The statute that the state came up is one thing, but that's not to say that the town can adopt a more equitable statute.
As this, as we build on this.
And a lawyer is gonna be needed to come in with the final say, probably, on giving advice.
Old business, okay.
Are we caught up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, uh, as far as the library septic alarm going off, I worked with Harley and was in contact with Lee and Cory, and hopefully that is on the mend.
So, uh, I did drop the ball on contacting Lee and Cory, uh, but after Bob Jones's second polite phone call, I now have a voice panel and text into him, and I'm experienced with trying to get ahold of him.
Okay.
Oh, and the alarm light is still on, but there's no noise.
Right, audible, so it's, it is obviously just a malfunction with the sensor to just activate the light, whether it's clean the lens or whatever, but he's well worked with you and figured it out.
Yes.
Um, and, I'm not sure where we ended up with this, because we beat it around for years with the railroad building in West Pollet. Uh, resident is still wants to buy that building and take it, take it away, take the lumber from it and build a garage at his house, so I don't know where we ended up. I believe we repossessed it.
I don't think, Julie has her hand up, we never were able to repossess it.
That building is privately owned, so if someone wants to buy it, they have to go to the owner and make a deal with them, and it has Zippo to do with the town.
Right.
And V-Trans is examining their ownership rule in it right now, I believe.
Not still, nothing to do with the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, if we're still in old business, I can do my update on the bike ped grant.
Please.
Alright, so I met today with Stephanie from Rutland Regional Planning Commission, Peter Pochop from V-Trans, and the two engineers who are going to be working on this, on this project. Um, they are Brandon Roberts, who, um, they are with the, the engineering firm VHB, who's the one we contracted with. Um, Brandon has been with them for 10 years, and he's gonna be the project manager for this project. He's also their engineering director for the state of Vermont. And the primary project engineer for us is Tanner Burt, who has been with VHB for about three years. And they gave me the names of a bunch of other people who will be doing other things, um, if we need them, such as quality control, they have a project designer and a NIPA coordinator. Um, I've, one of the reasons we went with VHB as the engineering firm, besides the fact that they gave us the lowest rate, even though it wasn't super low, was that they do have a deep bench of people who can, they can call in to do all these things. The purpose of this meeting was just to, for me to ask any questions that the select board had given me, and for them to sort of lay out the project, um, which is, was in the proposal that they gave to us. So the, the things that I need to share right now with the rest of the select board, Mike had asked me to ask them a question about, um, if at some point in the process we hit a snag that we cannot overcome, will we only be on the hook for the work done up to that date? Yes, that is correct.
Okay, good.
Same with the Regional Planning Commission, so the work that Stephanie is doing. Where if, if we hit a point where it can't go forward, that's, that's it. We will not have to pay them the full amount. Other things that we, that would be good to know are sort of the, the plan for what's gonna be happening in the next few months. Um, the first thing that they're gonna be doing is sending out some folks from their firm to do a field survey. And right now, the dates they have down for that are July 22nd through 25th. So you may see some engineers or people that they have employed, um, at this corner doing some surveying and gathering of information, possibly taking photographs. They'll be doing that, that week, so that's what these folks will be here for. They are, this is research for compiling the project base mapping. They're doing that between now and August. After they compile the project base mapping, they will start doing consideration of alternatives. They'll be doing that in September. They anticipate that the public meeting, where they will present some options, and the public will weigh in, they're thinking that will be November. They also would really like to do a site visit before the public meeting, where they can walk around and look at the area, and folks who are interested or concerned can come and walk around with them, and they can just sort of get the lay of the land as well, which I think is a very good.
Chase them, chase them away with a stick.
I think that that's a, that's a good choice for them to do. So that's, I think that's everything that I had to report about where that's at right now.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I've been back and forth to Boston every day with oversized loads, and, um, I can't help but notice, I'm paying attention to different towns that we go through, and I wanted to take pictures, but I'm driving, but, there's a couple towns that just simply have the traveled portion of the road. They have a, kind of a, no, it's, 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 um, painted portion that varies, some is only a foot wide, some is two foot wide. That is like a non-travel, um, and then they have a bike path, slash walking path, that's two foot wide, or whatever, on the other side. So the entire thing on the side of the traveled portion of the road is about four feet. They don't have sidewalks, they don't have, you know, something set back, they just extended the width of the blacktop a little bit wider, and because they didn't have room for sidewalks, or, or maybe budgetary reasons to save money, but they put a walking slash bike path alongside the traveled portion of the road, and...
And then they're hit by an oversized load?
No. And then, guess what? It's very easy to plow in the winter.
Yes.
Because you just leave the wing down and you plow the bike path too in the winter, and not have to buy a separate machine and employ a separate person just to
To do the sidewalks.
Plow and keep the sidewalks clear and sanded and everything else, so, anyway. I have been noticing that on a daily basis, and it's, uh, it seems pretty simple, but we'll see what the engineers decide.
Anything else under older unfinished business? New business? Anything under new business? Public comment. Frank?
Continuation of the MIRP thing, we're still working on that, uh, Jeremy's trying to work through some stuff. I noticed your guy was Williams, Pumping or HVAC, whatever, was out here.
Yeah.
So I came in, 'cause I was doing pictures, uh, for the IR cameras as well, so I went down, bumped into him, and we're standing there next to the furnace room, and the furnace is going full blast in the basement here. And, so, uh, I says, is it running hot water, or any, he says, he didn't think so. So we found that there's a little 20-gallon hot water tank down there, electric it looks like, that supplies the hot water here and here, so why would they... that supplies the hot water here and here, so why would the furnace be running? And so he's looking for something calling, or a thermostat is calling. And we went around to all the thermostats, and he looked at them all, turned a bunch down, and he says, there's some thermostat that's broken or something that's calling the furnace, causing the furnace to run. So he just flipped the switch since the hot wa, on the furnace, since the hot water is still going to come up here. And so the furnace is turned off, so we're not burning oil loss underlying. We got a thermostat problem somewhere in the building.
We'll have to get that squared away.
Yeah. I told him to talk to you about it.
Yeah, we talked about it. We'll make sure that we get that done appropriately in the fall.
But the library is still running their hot water off the furnace.
Yes?
Is there any news on the ceiling upstairs in the town hall?
Nothing has been, there hasn't been any, any activity on doing anything with the ceiling at this point. We got the air conditioning fixed, but the ceiling hasn't, hasn't resurfaced to the, to the, to the action yet.
Is it the lack of money, or is it the lack of somebody taking that on?
Probably the lack of someone taking initiative to, to dig into it. Anything else under public comment?
I emailed you the letter of interest of the library board position, and I just, yeah, so I'm
What up? We did have, if you have a minute. We did get a, we did get that letter today. It was late in the day. And we have, and we just found out about it this morning that the position is open. And the standard procedure that we've been following for years is that when, when a position comes open on any of the boards, we advertise it. And then after the applicants have a reasonable amount of time to apply, the, the board that needs to fill that chooses one, and then it brings the select board to, to appoint, so.
I'm confused because in my, with the school board, it's, the select board has the full authority, and it's not, the school board doesn't have any say in nominating anybody. The select board fills in for the electorate because it's the publicly voted on position. But yeah, that's, that's my understanding of how that works.
I think we had an issue with this last time. I remember when I was appointed to the planning commission, there was some, there was some discussion of this because the planning commission had interviewed the people and put forward some potential people. But then the select board wanted to do something different and did something different than what the planning commission had suggested. And I think that at that time, Frank had brought forward that it was really on the select board to do it. Maybe not to do all of it, but the final decision was
The final decision is, but the past, as, as long as, as I can remember, it's my term on the board, we've always tried to get input, we need, we need to be fair and put it out.
Sure, yeah.
And so that we, that anybody that's interested in applying for the position can apply. And then the board usually recommends someone.
Right, but the, yeah, the select board, from, for the school board, the select board gives the courtesy of hearing of, from the board, but the select board is the one that chooses.
The select board chooses it.
And yes, I understand that you just opened it up, but I know that, that I just wanted to make sure that you had seen the letter.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Harley?
I recall that when there were previous resignations on the library board of trustees, the trustees met an open meeting to determine possible candidates and to vote on who to recommend to the select board. Grace Larson, current trustee, and a past trustee, Heather Lund, were selected this way. Three days ago, we had a resignation from the library's board, and we'll be meeting on the 16th of July to consider who to recommend to the select board for their decision. However, I should update this with, past practice has been to advertise the position. I actually wasn't aware of that. I thought it was a word-of-mouth thing. Do you recall where you advertised?
When I was on the planning commission, Deb sent out, I hadn't known that there was an opening on the planning commission until Deb sent out the email, and she publicized it in all the usual places, you know, like
The website.
The website.
The Facebook.
The Facebook, yeah, those things. Because, I mean, in my, in my experience, I wasn't aware that I could become involved with the community until I saw in an email that there was an opportunity. And then, you know, the rest is history.
If I could finish, may I finish my, I'm sorry, I had asked that question, but we are certainly, if there's background information requested by the select board or if desired multiple candidates to the select board to choose from, the library board will provide that.
Not necessarily.
Lindsay?
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention that when I was the library director, I solicited both Grace Larson and Heather Lund to be the board members. It didn't go out for advertisement. It was just brought before you and presented as we would like this person to fill in, because it was in between, you know, it wasn't an election.
The election.
And so we understood that the select board then made the decision, and we just recommended, but it wasn't, it wasn't advertised, and it happened fairly quickly.
Okay. Lauren?
So, I mean, I guess you know that we're going, we don't have a library director right now, and I'm not entirely comfortable with, I mean, I know that there's a timeline that I respect and appreciate it, but right now, the board is made up of four members. And generally, I mean, I would really love it if you guys would watch some of our meetings, because I don't feel like I'll be well represented by vote, and I, I'm not comfortable with Harley's description of just like the library making this decision in open meeting and then coming with a candidate for you. Not only that, I didn't, I got an email yesterday about the resignation, and now I'm finding out that it was three days ago, so I don't understand about that delay. I really do encourage you guys to watch some of the meetings. Thank you.
No, Frank?
Behind me?
Nancy.
So my concern is I want to know who's going to absorb the duties of the director that's departed, because those duties were the treasurer's duties, and there's also, there's already been a lax in payments over there, you know, their Wi-Fi was shut off last week or something for lack of payment. So there's a real concern, is who's going to be paying those bills? And it's also timing as we get into the sale, this book sale, which is super important, that you have somebody financially responsible over there. So just voicing that concern that it is a timing issue to get somebody in that position as soon as possible.
Julie?
Because the library doesn't have their own federal, like employer identification number and things like that, and because they fall technically under the umbrella of the town, I am, I am responsible for cutting the checks and doing the deposits that come to me from the treasurer of the library. I am willing to collect the money from the sale and count it up and to get it deposited. I am not willing to take over the responsibilities entirely of the treasurer of the library.
Nor should you have to.
And I shouldn't have to, and I'm not willing, just so that we're completely clear. I am willing to sit and help someone and train them on how to put together works, and especially because then they will come to me the way that I want them. But that is basically the extent of my willingness to participate and help with this.
Can the library trustees appoint someone to be the treasurer now that the treasurer has left?
I believe we have somebody on the board who has demonstrated capability in that area.
That's news to me.
So just real quick, this isn't a library board meeting, I just want to make sure we clarify that. And the other thing I just wanted to acknowledge is that this isn't the whole topic of advertisement. I think that that word is being taken more literally than perhaps was intended. I think the idea was, when the town adopted our statement of inclusivity, part of those discussions, when we were talking about inclusivity, was ensuring that all members of our community were aware of opportunities, you know, and ways to be a part of it. So the idea of allowing, like Jessica said, how Jessica became involved with the town, just the idea of allowing all of the townspeople to just be, to be made aware of what opportunities there might be, is aligning with the inclusivity statement. So I think I just wanted to clarify those two parts.
Deb, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I would like to interject in this conversation that while somebody is going to be appointed, it will only be until the next town meeting, and they'll have to run for an election for the position. I just want to make that clear and to remind potential candidates that that would be the process.
Thank you. Frank?
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any board I've ever been on, including the fire department, whenever anybody resigned, you did a formal written resignation, and it was accepted by the meeting, by the body. And then there was a process by which to, to replace. And sometimes people went for leaves of absence, some people resigned, some, you know, but it was basically a formal process, and it wasn't just somebody saying, I'm not going to be anymore. I don't know what happened. But that's just the framework, and the select board, actually bring it into the select board, actually has control over if they have duties, however they want to do it. Whether they want to have an advisory group do it, to advise them, or whatever, you can do what you want.
Harley?
The process of the library board reaching out and making sure that it's widely publicized within town takes into account the independence of the library board of trustees, and when we make the recommendation, that it makes clear the responsibility of the select board to actually make the decision about the appointment and make the appointment to be a trustee until the next election.
Sue?
I just wanted, I just wanted to be clear. You will consider, you will consider nominations for this appointment from members of the community also, and not just the library board?
We will take into consideration everything, everybody that brings their interests forth.
Good, thank you.
Anything else under public comment?
By which date will this be advertised that that position is open?
Usually through like the website, and Deb can put it out on an email.
I think just as soon as the library, I think, it seems as though the library board will announce that there's a vacancy on their board and communicate that with Deb, and we can get that on the, that can be put up on the website through the web coordinator. So once the library board is able to acknowledge that vacancy, and then the library board can put that out there, and then the select board can
Right.
hear about it.
Okay, thank you all.
And hopefully adjourn.
You beat him to it.
I beat you to it.
Abby, a second there? All favor.
Hi.
Post carry.